Let's call our meeting to order. Treasurer, please call and roll.
President Baker.
President.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Vice President Paul.
Here.
Ms. Gibbs.
Here.
Ms. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Peretti.
Here.
Ms. Reyes.
Yes.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion that we adopt the agenda?
Someone second.
Treasurer?
President Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yeah.
Vice President Paul.
Yes.
Ms. Gibbs.
Yes.
Ms. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Peretti.
Yes.
Ms. Reyes.
Yes.
Mr. Kerry.
Thank you very much. As you know, we are here to hear from Dr. Stanford on the his goals around strategic academic improvement. And so, we, as you know.
Yes, sir.
Would like to move expeditiously through this. So I will turn the floor over to Dr. Stanford. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity, for allowing our senior leadership team to make this presentation this evening. Tonight, we seek to advance a plan for strategic academic improvement. It's an idea sparked by conversations over the last several months, as I and our leadership team have been tasked with finding better ways to minimize our budgets while maximizing our academic performance. I am not asking the board tonight to approve any specific plan. Instead, I am asking for your feedback before we dive deeper into developing this strategy as a senior leadership team. As with any good plan, it's smart to first identify the challenges ahead in our current academic status. So in tonight's presentation, I will begin with three challenges facing our district that I believe this approach can address. Then, I will explain the theory behind this strategy and what we are calling our academic surge. Next, I will show how this academic effort is also aligned with the five-year forecast conversations the board had with Treasurer Behor about financial sustainability. Finally, before your discussion, I will lay out why I think this is the right time for us to take action. So let me begin with the three challenges that are not necessarily new, but have really jumped out at me in recent months. The first is what many are calling the dawn of the automation nation in this country, as we truly start to see the impact of automation and artificial intelligent technology on our society. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. once quoted another theologian and said, "The arc of the moral universe is long, but it bends towards justice." I am going to use that quote to make a point about human history and its impact on today's educational system. I believe that there is an arc of human history. The arc of human history bends towards technological advancement. Over the past 200 years, we have seen this arc shift from an agrarian-based society to an industrial-based society, to the onset of the information and digital-based society in the last 70 years. In the last 70 years, there has been a rapid shift from traditional careers during the industrial age to an economy based on information technology. This information technology age has been marked by ubiquitous computers, the internet, and mobile devices. Our current social and economic transformation with technology is in the world of robotics and automation, which are taking the place of human activities. Today, this robotic and automation revolution affects more than just blue-collar type of jobs we typically think about. As I learned in this CBS Sunday Morning story in April, many common blue-collar and white-collar jobs may soon be replaced or dramatically changed by the advancement of this technology.
Our country is on the road to becoming an automation nation, quite literally on the road. Our money issue cover story is from David Poe of Yahoo Finance.
Tony Hughes has been a long-haul truck driver for more than 20 years, but today, all he has to do is sit back and relax.
Okay, rosebud is on. Woo-hoo!
We're hauling 20,000 pounds of freight down the Florida Turnpike in a self-driving robotic truck. It's been retrofitted with a self-driving kit made by Starsky Robotics. Kartik Tiwari and Stefan Selz-Oxmaker founded the company in 2016.
We think that sometime towards the end of the year, we could be doing this around without a person behind the wheel.
This year?
Yeah.
Self-driving trucks this year?
Yeah.
And if it's not his company, it might be Otto, whose truck made headlines last October by driving itself across Colorado to deliver a shipment of beer. Otto is owned by Uber, which has also been testing self-driving taxis in Pennsylvania and Arizona. But here's the thing, once our trucks and taxis drive themselves, what will happen to the people who need to do those jobs? In the U.S., that's 180,000 taxi drivers, 600,000 Uber drivers, and 3.5 million truck drivers.
We really need to start and think very seriously about this.
Martin Ford is the author of Rise of the Robots.
This is it?
He says driverless cars and trucks are just the beginning of a wave of automation that will threaten millions of jobs in every industry at once, like America's nearly 5 million store workers. Later this year, shoppers in Seattle will be able to walk into the first Amazon Go grocery, take what they want, and walk out again. Sensors will detect what you take and bill you automatically.
The cashiers are totally gone. You're going to end up with the equivalent of Walmart with, you know, a handful of employees. If you scale that out, then that's just extraordinarily disruptive.
You name an occupation, and there's somebody considering a robot to take it over.
Look how delicate. Perfect every time.
At Zoom Pizza in Silicon Valley, four specialized robots help make the pizza. Eventually, the company plans to replace the remaining humans on the line, too. Here's Zoom's chief technology officer, Josh Goldberg.
You would think there would be some Roman pizza chefs who'd say, "No, this is not the way it's been done since our ancestors."
Well, the world changes. You know, there's a lot of other things we don't do just the way our ancestors did.
The common wisdom is that robots primarily threaten repetitive, blue-collar jobs. Not so, says Martin Ford.
We're seeing dramatic advances in the area of computers analyzing tumors, recognizing medical scans, mammograms, and being able to find disease. We're seeing, you know, algorithms move into areas like journalism, for example.
Wait, wait, wait. Certainly not journalism.
Oh, yeah, absolutely journalism. By one account, every 30 seconds, there is a news story published on the web or maybe in a newspaper that's machine-generated.
Algorithms are even threatening the masters of the universe. Two weeks ago, BlackRock, the world's largest money manager, announced that it's laying off dozens of human stock pickers and replacing them with robots. By 2025, across the financial industry, artificial intelligence is expected to replace 230,000 human workers.
Bring on the disruption that is automation.
And we've seen this disruption even here in the state of Ohio, when we learned just earlier this year that the Ohio Department of Education used artificial intelligence to score our third-grade reading tests in our essays. And so this disruption is ongoing. Columbus City Schools was founded in 1845. We are 173 years old, soon to be 175 years old. We have produced some of the most talented people the world has ever known: Bill Willis, Nancy Wilson, Eddie Rickenbacker, Howard Hopalong Cassidy, Bernie Casey, James Thurber, astronaut Don Isley, and the only two-time Heisman Trophy winner Archie Griffin. Our mission statement is strong, but our first challenge is a critical one for our students. How do we live up to this mission and meet today's social, economic expectations with every student in this new automation nation, global economy? The next challenge to introduce to you this evening is the rapid pace of change and what many people call the disruption of technology. To simply say it's a new world is an understatement. By some estimates, the world is now changing at 10 times the speed of the past. That means that our district, our students, and our families could face two to three different new worlds in the 13 years they are with us. We must ask ourselves, are we preparing all of our students to keep pace with the fast-changing society that we live in? To further exemplify the fast pace of change, think about how long it took some revolutionary innovations in our history to be adopted. Otherwise known as disruptions, the invention of the airplane by the Wright Brothers of Dayton, Ohio, took 68 years before reaching 50 million users. Electricity took 46 years before it reached 50 million homes. But computers accomplished that goal in just 14 years. The internet in only seven years, social media in less than three years, and a game for smartphones that had people wandering our parks in a daze playing a game called Pokemon took only 19 days to reach 50 million users. I give credit to our Innovation and Reform Committee for bringing some attention to this matter over the past year. They developed over the past year the Portrait of a Graduate. The Portrait of a Graduate is based on some of these new social and economic expectations in the research that has been done over the past 20 years, which begins to list the attributes and skills our young people need to be in order to be successful in a changing world: collaboration, critical thinking, communication, mastery of content, problem solving, and social responsibility. Notice what's not here, however: computer technology. I view computer technology as a tool, not a skill. We know that computer technology is fast-changing. Before our current incoming seniors will graduate, computer technology will likely change and be outdated in a few years. We need our young people to have the skills that will allow them to figure out how to use any type of computer technology that may arise over the next several years into the future. In other words, as we see here in our second challenge, how do we empower our students today with the ability to adapt to this rapid pace of change, to be ready for the next disruption, and how do we give them the skills to compete for jobs in technologies that haven't even yet been invented? The third challenge I want to point out is what I'm calling the Ohio Department of Education's zero-sum game. As you well know, our teachers, building leaders, and community partners have helped some of our students achieve tremendous gains in the classroom. As these numbers from last year show, we've experienced steady measurable gains in reading and in math at the elementary level. We've been able to nearly eliminate the achievement gap in more than a dozen of our schools at each of the three grade bands, and we're seeing marked improvement in our graduation rate. Despite these improvements, our grades on the report card will likely go unchanged again. It's been well documented, and even the state superintendent has admitted, that all of the changes in the state report card over these past few years have had a significant impact on our districts. The state report card has changed nearly every year, and there is debate today on changing it again. These frequent changes have led to a lot of confusion for our families and frustration for our students. Most of that frustration comes from when the state moves the goalposts, either setting new cut scores or adding new indicators. You'll recall last year, how many of our third graders were caught off guard when the state changed the scoring requirements on the third-grade reading guarantee halfway into the fall semester? We use the analogy at the time that the change was like Lucy pulling the football just as Charlie Brown was set to kick the ball. Here are the scores on our state report card over the past five years, with particular focus on progress to make this point about the state changing the goalposts. For the 2014-15 school year, our district and many of our individual schools earned As and Bs in progress for achieving more than a year's worth of academic growth. But just one year later, even though we did not change our practices or stop our successful efforts in the classroom, the state moved the scoring on those indicators, moving the goalposts once again for our families and our students, and we were back to Fs on the state report card. These constant changes in state requirements often result in a zero-sum gain on our local report card. Any noticeable gains that we make are wiped out, or our steady progress is set back. So as the state contemplates even making more changes again this year, how do we give our students and teachers the tools to get ahead of whatever changes are coming in the future? And at the district level, can we identify our best opportunities to move the needle off of all of these Fs and improve our local report card? So, we have the challenge of today's jobs and job skills becoming obsolete in an automation nation. This is combined with the rapid pace of change that means our young people need to be adaptive. And there is a true need for this district to break through the zero-sum game that the state of Ohio has created with the state report card. To address these three challenges, we have to respond now, not later, when we fall even further back due to the rapid changes. Tonight, I am proposing the start of a process to develop a strategic academic improvement plan that centers around the theory of an academic surge. Like a bolt of energy and a surge of electricity, we must help our students quickly get ahead by the strategic implementation of critical resources and initiatives. By using this theory, don't think of this academic surge as simply speeding things up or speeding to the top of, speeding to the top at light speed. Think of this academic surge like you might think of running a marathon race. Trained marathon runners know that if they want to win the race, they cannot simply run at a faster speed the whole 26 miles. The winners pick the right time in the race and the right spot along the course of the race to speed up and break away from the pack. And they know the right amount of energy to use to break away, but not drain so much energy that they can't make it to the end of the race. I am proposing this evening that we use the same philosophy when it comes to our strategic academic improvement. First, we can identify key points along the academic timeline to surge ahead by investing in additional resources, time, and strategies aimed at quickly improving student performance. Think of the third-grade reading guarantee. We would identify certain two-week periods throughout the year when we would offer intense class work aimed at boosting specific skills of our students. We've already seen some success with this type of boost with our Saturday reading academies that we've implemented. Second, we can pinpoint key elements within our academic indicators where students have the greatest opportunities for improvement. Think about the graduation rate. We know that one of the sub-elements that would allow us to improve this score is by decreasing the number of students who drop out of the cohort. So as part of this surge, we might invest additional resources and talents at preventing dropout between ninth and 10th grades, when we start to see the numbers change. Third, in this plan, we would align our academic surge points with those key academic components on the state report card with our district, which our district has the potential to achieve the greatest opportunity for immediate growth or change. To be clear, we want to maintain steady growth and improve on all of the components of the state report card. We believe that we can identify one or two at a time to surge ahead. The above examples that I have given you have been used as simply, has been used as examples to simply give you some idea of what type of surges that we might be able to create. At the heart of the academic surge theory is a reliance on the type of reliable, in-depth data that we now have available. A few weeks ago, I asked our chief academic officer, Dr. Michelle Klein, to develop a tool to help our senior leadership team and building administrators use predictive analytics to drive our analysis and the development of improvement strategies. As always, Dr. Klein responded, "Using her talent and knowledge to exceed my expectations." She created this predictive analytic model as a tool. It uses our past three years of performance to predict the incremental gains on our local report card. If we were to continue doing what we are doing today, and if the state does not move the goalposts, and again, let me state this, if the state does not move the goalposts, we expect to see improvement on components such as progress and K through three literacy, both of which could go up to C grades. This growth is good, especially given where we are starting at today, but it's not great. For me, what this predictive tool does show is where we have the best opportunity to really make some gains in a short amount of time. Using our strategic academic improvement theory and based on our predictive analytics model, the right components to strategically accelerate and surge ahead are in K-three literacy and the graduation rate for next year. If we make the key strategic investments to surge ahead in year one of the plan, we can expect to see some tremendous gains in three years or less, which you can see with the green arrows and the yellow arrows. We can expect to see the tremendous gains in three years or less, and by year three, we might implement the next wave of the surge and target progress where we might be able to close to our goal in a couple of years, as seen in yellow. The same may occur with the remaining component gap closing and prepared for success, which would come toward the end of the surge if they don't already improve as a part of the gains on the other three components. But I want to make one thing clear this evening. We must continue to invest and achieve the steady yet modest gains in all of these components. If we are to make the surge work, and the state must stop making changes to the system, it's not about ignoring our component to focus on another, but simply giving extra attention when and where it strategically makes the most impact for our students. Just as the marathon runner must determine the right amount of energy to use and not run out before the end of the race, we too will need to identify the proper surge protectors to make sure these quick gains don't short-circuit on success. During these surge periods, we will need to ensure that we have the proper social and emotional supports in place to help our students and our teachers with the additional academic work. We will also need to recognize the need to be strategic in the timing and length of any academic surge points so as not to burn out those students and teachers. This surge plan is not just in the classroom. We think we can rally all departments and offices across the district with an all-hands-in approach to identify ways to support the surges and maximize their effort. We should also recruit outside surge reports, uh, supports from the community as needed, similar to what we heard tonight with I Know I Can, to focus on identified indicators. If absenteeism is a focus, then perhaps additional support and work by city here would be needed to help us prove the results in keeping students in school. To truly have the kind of impact that will make a difference for our students, the mindset behind our strategic academic improvement effort must be aligned in all that we do. That includes the conversations the board has been having about financial stability and sustainability led by Treasurer Behor during his five-year forecast discussions last month. To be most effective and to be most responsible to those we serve, these two priorities should serve and support each other. That's why you have heard similar themes in both of our presentations. Both priorities are driven by a strategic plan, one that plans for today and for eight years out. Both adopt a wish to break away from the zero-sum game, and both are aimed at being ready to adapt to and get ahead of the changes at the state level. As I mentioned earlier, my goal tonight is not to have the board to take formal action on a specific plan. I am really looking for your feedback before our senior leadership team begins the process of putting in the staff time and effort to develop these new plans. I do ask that you begin to consider changing or modifying our current district goals to better reflect the priorities and the needs for strategic academic improvement and for sustainability and stability in our finances. This is something that our senior leadership team have been discussing for the last several weeks, and there was overwhelming support among our senior leadership team that these two priorities should be turned into our goals instead of the three that we have. There will be some who will ask, "Why now? Shouldn't this wait for the next superintendent?" Or wait until the state makes its next update to the state report card? The truth is, we can't wait. Right now, the district has the means and the ability to make this happen. We have the right teams in place, the right tools in place, right now, to begin this effort immediately. And as we have seen in our predictive analytics, this is the right time. The opportunity exists now to develop a focused and aligned, long-range plan for the new school year that will start in a couple of months, while at the same time realizing short-term gains. More so, we have an opportunity to generate a true sense of urgency with our students, staff, stakeholders, and community. As the video Automation Nation demonstrates, the changing world demands us to take action right now. We owe it to our students, we owe it to this community, and we owe it to ourselves as caretakers of 173-year legacy as an institution in this community. In his Birmingham jail letter, Dr. King wrote, "For years now, I have heard the word 'wait.' It rains in our ears with piercing familiarity. This wait has almost always meant never. Dr. King also told us that the time is always right to do the right thing." Now is the time to do the right thing for our students, to make sure that they are competitive in the 21st century. President Baker, and members of the board, that concludes the presentation this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Stanford. So, colleagues, we had discussed earlier the possibility of hearing the presentation and then setting another time when we could come back and discuss it. And what's our consensus? So we've heard the presentation that Superintendent wanted to share with us, so we can discuss tonight, ask you questions, provide feedback, or do you want to set that for a subsequent meeting? Thoughts?
I think I would agree with Mary Jo that we would not be able to ask questions in less than 30 minutes. We would need time to digest the information and be able to provide better insight at a future date.
Other thoughts? Yes, ma'am.
I would just say, I mean, I think this is a broad concept, and I think for our discussion is, what does this exactly mean?
Sure.
There's, you know, what's the content? What's, what are the best ramifications? What does this mean for students? You know, is it extra school hours, changing calendar, that sort of thing? So, I have a number of thoughts, but that's in general. I mean, I don't even, I don't think there's enough here to discuss tonight.
Ms. Gibbs?
Oh, I think there's a lot that you just put on the table. I'm on page 16, looking at the state report card for the last one, two, three, four years. I guess my question is this, and to ask, because you ask a question, and I would want to know, when do you want the answer? Because you ask, do we, other than changing goals, what direction should we go in? And so, if you could provide to me for the next conversation, whenever we're going to plan it, just a copy of our state report cards, the condensed version to us. If you can have them, if you could send that to us in advance of the next discussion, I think that will help shape when we have the conversation. What you provided, I get, and what you're saying is that we need to do something very quickly, and we need to find a way to intercept it. So I would offer, we have one more meeting in June, and our July meetings are only dedicated to the search. And so, we have to open school on August 23rd. So this, to me, is a, what part of this do you want to pick up at the next school board meeting and dedicate some minutes in the next board meeting? Because we have to. Because we have to open school in two months, and so if you're asking for us to do something in response, or if we need to think about how we do something next year differently, I would offer on the table that we pick this up and add a section of the superintendent's report at the next meeting to pick up on this conversation during the meeting while it's fresh, while we're doing it. And then we can ask questions, we can ask for whatever data we want, we could ask for clarification between now and then, and then we can keep the conversation going.
Mr.?
Yes, sir. If I may, the only thing I'd like to add at this point, as you discuss the timing of all of this, is that the senior leadership team has been, 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 started this conversation in April, and we're, we have a retreat planned for the twenty-first and twenty-second of this month. Again, the intent of this presentation was to introduce this, this concept of having two goals as opposed to three. We currently have three goals. And if we, and for this retreat on the twenty-first and twenty-second, we were hoping to get out of the board tonight that, yes, the two goals make sense and that we should, we can move forward as a leadership team to begin to develop the strategies, to begin to develop the, you, you, you talk about the meat of a strategic plan. We were hoping to get that direction tonight about two goals versus three, so that we can begin to then have the process and the conversations to develop the strategies, to develop the initiatives, and to develop the tactics that would make up a strategic plan. Now, mind you, the, the senior leadership team worked the last year and pulled together a draft strategic plan that was shared to the board, shared with the board back in November of two thousand seventeen. And that, that draft strategic plan already has a number of benchmarks, objectives, and some, some activities that could be used to achieve those, those objectives. But I would really like to see strategies better defined, and I would love to see activities and initiatives better defined for the board to know exactly what are those things we are going to do in the next three to five years to try and move the needle. But we can't start that, that conversation in earnest without having that top part decided.
So, Dr. Stanford? Mr. Peretti, yes?
So, I, I just have a little bit, so, I, I think everyone here agrees that we need to do this, you know, moving, always constantly moving the needle forward. I guess my question is, we, we finance and appropriate the goals, and, you know, a lot of what we already appropriated fits within, you know, our goals for the next year. Every single year, I complain about this, that we don't set, you know, goals together, you know, collaboratively. What that makes up, I mean, I, I feel like I've been blew up the face saying, we have an academic committee. Why don't we use this committee to do exactly what you're talking about? This five-year plan is like a five-year forecast, you know, what makes up that data? What are you trying to do? What are you trying to pinpoint within these goals that we set? These are your goals too as a superintendent, a treasurer, and internal auditor. They all sort of flow together. How do we monitor that? What are we evaluating? You know the record when it comes to direct report evaluations here. Now, this is something that I've been like, seriously have been saying, yes, I agree, we need to do it. But we need to have permanent structure within our policies, which is why I will be, now, I just want to give you some things to think about, is how can we make this more of a permanent thing? So that when we're gone, we're still looking at strategic goals. We're still looking at our annual goals and how that flows into it. So, I mean, that's sort of where I'm thinking right now. I'm a little, you know, I, we could change our goals from three to two. How does it impact what we already financed? Is it really an impact? And what are some timing things that we need to think about? But, I mean, I, I will be very much in favor of this, obviously, but to have some permanent structure, not just a report. I've heard a million reports from Ms. Gibbs over the years, this board's got.
Oh, yeah.
I've heard a lot. But we, we should have some permanent structures in our policies in the form of committees and charters that spell this process out. That's just what I feel that we should be doing.
And one of my questions as part of the discussion tonight was going to be the one about, is now the time to begin an academic committee specifically that we've talked about? But I think, so you, so the administration has retreats set, set for June twenty-first and second. We have our meeting, next meeting on the nineteenth, so.
Could I finish the timeline? So June twenty-first and twenty-second is our retreat that we're planning right now. Our, our hope was to have a draft of the strategic plan to the board by August, I believe, seventh is the first board meeting of the board, and then we would have, yeah, August the seventh, we would present the first draft plan to the board for a first review by the board. And then on August the twenty-first, we would present the, the draft plan to the board for a vote. Then, August the twenty-second, that would give us the opportunity to roll this out before the school year actually starts. August, I believe, August twenty, August twentieth, twenty-first, and twenty-second are professional development days in our school buildings across the district. And so it would give our building principals the opportunity to have these conversations about the plan with their, their team members before the school year starts.
So, Mr. President, a response though to that.
One of the things, if I may,
Yeah.
One of the things that I think I've shared with all of you was that after we heard this presentation and had a chance to discuss it and had consensus around if we wanted to move in this direction, realigning everything around these two priority areas, that then we would set a retreat specifically to discuss the five-year plan, the strategic plan. And that would, that would allow us time after we do that to have that opportunity to discuss it before it actually is, comes to the board, the first meeting in August, before we would then approve it, the second meeting in August, right before school starts. So we have lots of opportunity to provide input into this presentation, and we can do that, if not tonight, maybe at the next meeting. And then also have a retreat specifically to talk about the draft, the updated draft of the five-year plan. So, I believe Mr. Brown was.
I have just a response to the comments. I just want to have a response to the answer.
Okay, okay.
So will this, do you think this will trigger appropriation changes?
Well, and again, that's why it's important, from our perspective, it's important for us to try and get this done by August, because we all know, come September and October, we'll be starting, we'll be starting our conversations about the FY twenty budget.
We're talking about this school year. So my question is like, so how does the impact of the budget that we just passed impact on what you would like our district to move towards if there's changes in it?
We can work within the current budget going into the upcoming school year.
That's my question, yeah.
But what's more important, right, is that if we, if we can get this done by August, we then have the fall to make it a part of the next budget year, which is much more important for this planning, and then for the, the future years going out. Because, you know, with, with Executive Director Gooding, you know, we've adopted a five-year budget process that aligns to our five-year forecast. And so then we'll be able to adjust those out years to align with, with this, this plan. And so, again, if we don't do it by August and we miss that, that time cycle for the budget discussions, now we're waiting another year before we actually see, and it really, it's really another two years before we actually see any, any, any steps taken besides within our, within the, the budget constraints that are already there.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, thank you. I, I agree with, you know, everything that, that, you know, that Dr. Stanford has said about the process and about the timing. I've got questions about the presentation. Some of those have not yet dealt, hearing this for the first time. There's some of this that I want to think on and more information that we'll need. But I think that the amount of work that's gone into it, both by Dr. Stanford and by senior staff, deserves our attention and is worthy of our attention in a sustained way when we're fresh. And with a proposed retreat for senior staff coming up, I think we need to do it before that and provide some feedback. I would propose that we look hard at our calendars over the next couple of weeks and pick out some time that we can spend actually discussing this. And I would propose that we look at Saturdays and Sundays in addition. But to try to do this work at the end of a school board meeting in an evening, I don't think that, you know, it's, it's going to happen in a, in a, you know, in a focused way.
Okay, okay, thank you. So I think when we get closer to the end, we'll definitely get our calendars out and start looking. Agreed. Board Member Hudson, I do believe you would, thank you for your patience.
Thank you, no, it's fine. I have a question firstly, the lead off, and said you've been asked for a plan. I don't think any of, with the board has asked for this plan. I feel like this is like yelling fire in a crowded room. None of this, I mean, all of these things, you can't throw a rock and not hear about the changes of artificial ecology, I mean, that's been out there. It's, so it isn't like it's just developed. As, as Dominic pointed out, we budgeted to the current goals. And so this is, you know, just saying, well, we're going to change this, and we'll tell you what the changes are later. I, I would want to know, what is the new model? Where's it been done otherwise? How well has it worked? But I have to tell you, all of this, and a big part of what really, really bothers me is that right now, like, we are searching for a new superintendent. We're searching for new leadership, and this is bumping up to just at the end of transition. And for those of us that have been through, like, an administration change, you do want to, like, how do you bake it in? How do you bake in in a lame duck? And that's what this feels like. And I, I'm sorry, I know folks have worked on it, but it, there is, that is not okay with me. And I feel like we're looking for new leadership. We need to, we don't want to, like, change everything just before we get to that point. And certainly, certainly if we have some changes that we need to make to what are we're doing right now, where indicators are going down, but they should go up, let's deal with that. But the other thing is, is that I, you know, mixing what we're talking about here with the state report card, to me, it just seems like apples and oranges. Because the, the state report card, which we have said, and I know last year, you know, we've talked about amongst us that the state report card was problematic. And, and, you know, this board had issues with Dr. Good and the state report card going down, and we got to bring it up. And, you know, when we said at that time, they're moving the goalposts. No, it doesn't matter, we've got to go up, we've got to go up. I get that. But then we've got to, like, that fight the state, the Department of Education. That isn't about us trying to keep chasing the, the goalposts. But I think this is, there's a lot here, and there's a lot here that isn't new. And so why we have to bring it up at nine o'clock at night at the, you know, right as school is ending, and while we're at the cusp of looking for new leadership for this district, I just, I just think it's inappropriate, and the timing is way off, and it, it just doesn't feel right to me. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Gibbs, thank you for your patience.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you for those comments, and I, I understand what our colleagues are saying. But I think the crux of this conversation is, four years ago, these were our scores. Today, these are our scores. Why do we need to do something now? Because these are our scores. F, F, D, F, F, F. And if we keep these scores rocking, we're going to trigger more state action if we don't do anything now. Whether we do something with the current leadership, excuse me, or our, our, our now leadership, our state report card is in crisis. And even though they change the state report card, other people don't get Fs. Other people have Bs and Cs. And so, we have to look at, and, and loving the graduation rate of what we're doing now, but we know that we have students who are not meeting the mark. And in, whether it's, it doesn't matter who finally sits in this seat in this search, they're going to come in to a F, F, D, F, F, F. This is not good enough for our district, it's not good enough for our children, and it, it needs to change as soon as someone has a better plan to move us from F, F, D, F, F, F. And so, I am all for moving, picking this up, everybody sending the superintendent or Dr. Stanford all the questions we have so they can give us back the data we need to have an informed decision next Tuesday. And we keep this conversation going, but the urgency is that if we don't do something. Now, it's okay, we have five-year forecasts. It's forecasting money. This is forecasting our kids' lives. It's forecasting their trajectory. It's forecasting whether or not they will be at work, they will have a college degree, or if they will live below their potential for the rest of their life. This is the most important thing we do as board members. Tired or not, long nights or not, this isn't going to get done until we dedicate, not one, not just next week. We have to get back to what you've been asking for. So you've heard reports from me, but you haven't heard report card data. You've heard innovation committee reports. Uh, no, no, it's not. The report, the idea of our committee is new ideas.
That's what I'm trying to propose.
But the data that we have before us is what we are aboard, are obligated to govern and to help support. And if someone has a plan of what to do with it, I'm not going to wait a whole year for somebody else to come and say, now let's talk about our grade cards. The sooner, the better that someone has a plan. We need to do it, because right now, we can't be comfortable with failure. We have become too comfortable, and we haven't addressed it. We've heard the reports, but we have not dedicated time to hear the plan. I, I don't want to spend time on adding a goal or not going. I want to give you the direction to say, if we're failing, fix it.
So do we want to continue this discussion this evening? Or do we want to look at setting some dates? Board Member Hudson?
I don't know what we're being asked to do. Honestly, I don't think there's an ask on the table. And so, so what we saw there, our earlier slide, two years ago, the As and Bs, then it's back to Fs, but I don't, I don't know what we're being asked. I mean, it's asked to do planning, and asked to do planning, fine, but I, like, I don't know what we're being asked. Should, if there's something that needs to be fixed, of course we should look at that. But again, I don't know what being asked. Honey, I get that. I, I understand that we have absences and, excuse me, I, I get that. But I don't know what we're being asked. What's, what's going to move those needles? And I think the, the, the issue that the state board, when that, when we went from, from the As and Bs to the Fs, at that time, you know, some of, some of us said, let's fight the state board. And we, you know, and, and we didn't do that. And I, we didn't do that, we, it was, we, it, but it didn't happen. And, and I know there's the mentality of some, you can't fight City Hall, et cetera, but, but that wasn't because we had done something wrong that that changed. But I don't understand now, I mean, it sounds really kitschy of, let's surge, but what does that mean? And I, that's why, like, I don't know why we are having, all of a sudden, it's an emergency to do this when we don't know what it is.
I believe the superintendent's coming to us to ask for guidance around the administration's recommendation that we do realignment around these two specific priority areas that he outlined. I think that's what he wants guidance from.
We have, what we have done, everything around the three goals, so this is, it's moving, like, a lot of the earth. And so, like, to do that in, like, such a short amount of time, and in a lame duck, we are in a lame duck's planning right now. And I just, I don't think that that is appropriate. And it's to make that kind of significant change, or suggestion of significant change, but we don't even know really what the change is. There, there is nothing concrete on this table, nothing. And, and we're going to go back and plan and come back and tell you. And then that's going to be, like, that isn't a proposal. And so.
If I may, I would like to speak after Mr..
Vice President, would you like to go first?
Just very quickly, from what I'm, I believe I'm hearing, and there's an African proverb that says, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. So, the first bite that I'm, I believe I'm hearing, you're asking of us, is, what is your feedback on what you presented to us via email and what we have then, what we've seen in this current presentation? That's, that's the first step. The second step, second bite of the, the elephant here, the, is the idea that we're then looking at very seriously, planning our sessions for discussion that will give you some further guidance on what directives are to move forward. are to move forward. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
I just wanted to get an idea that, that, it's just that. But I'll, I'll defer to you. I just wanted to get that idea as clarity.
Mr. Stanford? I, I think first and foremost, Board member Hudson asked a question, or made the statement, no one asked for a plan. And with all due respect, I think that's incorrect. I, I was tasked by, by Superintendent Good at the time, to develop a strategic, to develop a strategic plan, because the board wanted to see that developed. And, you know, he approached me, I believe, in January of 2017. We started that process. In August of 2017, he announced his retirement. He told me after his, after announcing his retirement, that the board still wanted to see a plan. And in, and in fact, they wanted to move up the completion of that plan to have it in place before he resigned, or he retired in December. So we worked on that. We pulled together a draft. We had that draft to the board in October, and no action took place on it. When I was appointed as intern, I asked a question, do you guys want the plan to be finished, especially before a new superintendent is brought on board? I was told, yes, we want the plan completed before a new superintendent is, is brought on board, because a new superintendent will need that, that information. Now, that's the assumption I was working with. And when I, when I distributed the, the draft plan again in January, asking for feedback, I was told, this is not the right time. We've got other things on our plate with budget reductions, with the superintendent's search. We don't wanna deal with this right now, so just put it off. At the May 5th board meeting, I guess I got the, the wrong impression that the board was ready to take this up again, because you made the statement that it was, it, it really is time to look at developing a strategic plan again, because of the five-year forecast. And at that point, and nobody at the board, at, on that particular board meeting objected to the statement you made that night. And so I thought, again, that this was an indication that we needed to get this ramped up again. And so, as I mentioned before, we were already, as a senior leadership team, having discussions about what should be our priorities moving forward as a district. What are the things that are gonna put us in the best position to have focus, to have clarity, and to have a sense of direction and guidance to really make a difference and to have everybody roaring in the same direction? We, we discussed it for the last probably three to four weeks. And what you saw in this presentation is that there was an overwhelming majority of members of our senior leadership team that believe that, one, our current three goals don't speak to our business and operations team, doesn't really speak to our treasurer's office, and doesn't really speak to our internal auditor's office. They struggle to see themselves in the current three goals. And so, that discussion was one that said, you know, and again, this started in our conversation with the treasurer in preparation for his five-year forecast presentation. You know, he and I was, he wanted to share with me his presentation. He shared that presentation with me, and he was really making the point, hitting it hard, that, you know, as a district, we really have to focus on financial stability and sustainability. And even though I've known this for years, 'cause I've been in that public education for 20 years now, I've known it for years, that in order for academic success to occur, you've gotta have the financial resources intertwined intricately with your academic planning. And it dawned on me during that conversation with him, that, you know what, you're talking about financial stability and sustainability over the next eight years. Well, I've been talking to Chief Academic Officer Gillison about how are we gonna create academic improvement and success over the same period of time. And you know what? We've been doing this in silos. We've gotta bring this conversation together, and start thinking about it more strategically, where we're, we're aligning our resources to the academic priorities that we have as a district. And, and out of that conversation came this discussion in our senior leadership team for the last four weeks about, you know, our priorities really should be about academic improvement and financial sustainability and stability. Now, the details of what those goals could look like, we still have to develop. I have in my head my own personal beliefs about what they should look like. But I'm not the type of person to just put out something and dictate that everybody follow it. I'm the type of person that believes in collaboration and having team building around those ideas. I've got ideas in my head right now about what are the strategic, the strategies that can be used to help us achieve those two priorities. But we, as a senior leadership team, have not had those discussions yet, and I haven't shared them with other people. And so, what we're asking for tonight, you asked, what, what's on the table? We're asking the board right now, tonight, to tell us if we can go ahead and start planning around these two priorities. Because again, these two priorities speak to the entire organization. We had a debate at our senior leadership team, you know, and, and I shared with the senior leadership team before our last meeting. I said, you know, for the last two weeks, I've been really struggling about these two priorities that we've identified, because customer service is so important to us as an organization. And the, the internal auditor gave, I said to the team, I said, the internal auditor a couple of weeks ago, gave us a really compelling presentation on risk management. And it seems to me that those are two important additional things that we want to consider as a senior leadership team. And so maybe we should have four instead of two. The senior leadership team went through a conversation exercise during that meeting, and overwhelmingly came back and said, you know, we should stay with the two, because customer service and risk management cut across both academic improvement and financial sustainability and stability. And that we should have strategies in both of those priorities that speak to customer service and that speak to risk management. And so, there, you know, the, the, the ask on the table is, do we, because my understanding, because I was not in that discussion, my understanding is that a couple of years ago, the board sat down with Dr. Good and established, well, reaffirmed the mission statement, established a new vision statement, and established three goals. And so I felt that I couldn't just create two new goals by myself, or with the senior leadership team. We had to bring this conversation back to the board, to say, you've got three goals that, that doesn't speak to half the organization. Isn't it time that we have goals that speak to the entire organization? And, and that's what this conver, that's what we were hoping this conversation would be about, giving us that direction and guidance. So now we can then go back and continue our conversations around, okay, what are the strategies we need to develop? What are the tactics we need to develop? What are the initiatives that we need to develop in order to make those two goals a reality? And then lastly, lastly, you talk about the fight over the, the state report cards. Well, I personally have been in the, on the front line of that fight for the last 20 years, in the various positions that I've held. And I can tell you that we've won some battles, and we've lost some battles in that fight. I can tell you, in the last 10 to 15 years, we haven't won very many battles at all. In fact, we've lost almost every battle. And we've lost almost every battle, in my humble opinion, because we no longer have many legislators who are from urban districts, and who don't understand urban districts, and don't understand the plight of urban children, and what they go through every day in order to just make it to school every day, let alone try and learn something when they get to school. And so what you're hearing from our senior leadership team is that we can't wait for that anymore. We have to start doing something that's going to change. And it's really, it's really not as much about the state report card, is it a, and that's why we did the Automation Nation. Yeah, you may know that automation is around the corner, but I can tell you that there are people in our neighborhoods right now who don't know that, who have no clue what's coming around the corner, who think the jobs that, that, that are out there today are still gonna be there 10 to 15 years from now. And, and they're not. They're not gonna be there. And we're not preparing our kids for that future right now. And the only way that we can prepare our kids for that future, we've got to change the way that we are conducting ourselves in the classroom with our students. We've got to change the way, and that's what this Reimagine Conference is about. It's about equipping our teachers to use more project-based learning in the classroom, to use more visible thinking in the classroom, to use more writing skills in the classroom, so that they can be prepared to be critical thinkers, to be problem solvers, and to be innovative and cri, and creative thinkers. Because if they don't, they are gonna be left behind. When I, when I saw the, the Osmo robot in 2007, when I was working on Governor Strickland's education reform plan, and saw Osmo serving tea and coffee to customers at a Starbucks restaurant, and when I read the article about a year later, about a steel worker in northeast Ohio that lost his job because of, of, of steelworking jobs going overseas, and he tried to go through a retraining program, but because he could not adapt to what he was being taught, he then considered committing suicide. Those are the type of things that have kept me up at night, literally, worried about our children, worried about kids who are dealing with trauma every day, and worried about kids who have disabilities. And they're already behind the eight ball, trying to learn these new skill sets. And what are we gonna do? We gonna wait until one day they wake up and find out they can't get a job as a truck driver, because it's been automated? When they wake up and decide, and, and, and find out they can't get a job working in a pizza restaurant, because they got a, they got a robot making pizzas now? And it's around the corner. I just saw another video just over the weekend of robotic arms making salads for people. And this restaurant exists in New York right to this day. So again, you know, we can have these conversations, but, you know, what's really important? Our children.
All right, so Gibbs, Hudson, Peretti is the order I saw here.
So, in, in, in the spirit of time, and thank you for those comments, 'cause I think you clarified a lot of questions. Is it possible for you to move forward and create a plan without taking the time to change the goals? If we were able to just say, work on this, give you the green light to work on these two priorities, and then let us take the time later in a board retreat to handle goals and all that? Would, I mean, do you just need a green light to start doing the work? Because I don't wanna get caught up on whether we put this in goal one or this in goal two. The work is the work, and it needs to get done. So do you just need a green light on the, if we say, you know, do the work, and then we'll come back and fix goals in, in the semantics, is it possible to move forward and do the work, and then let us work Smith and do all that later? And say that, to your point of crafting it. But you've laid out two priorities, strategic academic improvement, financial stability. If we don't change anything on the paper, that work can move forward.
All of the strategic planning that I've ever done, and learning at one of the world's foremost organization development leaders, when I was working with Governor Strickland, I would say no. Because with every strategic planning that I've ever done, you start with your mission, you start with your vision, and then from those two things, you identify what your goals are gonna be, based on what your, your SWOT analysis tells you, what your current status is as an organization. Can we, can we work with these two priorities, and then at some point, come back and maybe have to redevelop things? Yeah, we can do that.
Can you work on the academic surge part?
Yeah, I mean, we, we can, we can, we can, because here's the reality. Our goal number one currently is on academic achievement, right? Our goal number two is on human capital development and on safe learning environments. Goal number three i- is, is on accountability. And as I said, you know, it, it doesn't speak to the financing of the organization. And, and so, yeah, we can go forward with these as the, as the, the focal points for us to develop the strategies and the tactics. But then, you know, if we come back in another two weeks, another month, and you all tell us, well, you know what, we wanna keep the three goals that we have. So then, the, the month that we've spent working is for naught. I don't, I don't, I, I came here, I'm, well, we presented this information to the board because, again, we felt it was necessary to get the board's feedback and direction and guidance. And quite frankly, because since I started this project almost a year and a half ago, it's been like up and down about whether to complete this or not. And so I needed to have some direction. And so of what you're telling me tonight, and that's fine. I haven't, you know, if that's what the board is telling me tonight, you're not ready to give us that guidance and direction on those two priorities. And you want us to slow things down until you have that discussion, then that's what the board wants to do.
That's a word whistle a little bit, Dr. Stanford.
No, it's not. No, it's not. Now, Mr. Peretti, Mr. Peretti, with all due respect, it is not, because this is what I'm trying, I, I hope you understand what I'm trying to say to you tonight. We need guidance and direction. And if, and if the board collectively is not ready to give that to us tonight, then I just have to accept that and move on.
No, but my whole, my whole point is, I mean, I've had conversations about goals and work plans and objectives. You know, these three goals, I get, I get, no one here in this room wants to stop making academic achievement more and more, making it better for our students. No one here wants to slow that down or get that in the way. I guess my whole thing is, we find ourselves in this every single year. Quite frankly, I used to complain to Dr. Good about the goals all the time. And he would say to me, you can fit anything into those goals. It's all about the work plans and the objectives behind them. We, as a board, just don't do enough time of prioritizing these sort of things, monitoring these sort of things, what we wanna see, what those deliverables can be over time. I mean, that, that's my whole argument. I, I, I'm happy. I'm glad we're moving in this direction. I, again, it just comes down to structure. And, you know, and I, you know, I, I see you want us to change the goals. I mean, quite frankly, we can, you can do, you can achieve everything you want within the three goals right now. I mean, you really can. But we need, we, as a, as a board, need to continue to devote time to see, what are these objectives? What are these work plans that we're calling the strategic plan over time? How, how does that, how does that line up with the state report card? What does that data consist of? What are some things that we need to be wary of? Remember the more to the data presentation that we had, those sort of things that also make up this sort of picture? And then we can say, if we had a structured environment for this, something that we knew we were gonna do every year, so we don't find ourselves asking a million questions at the end of the year, like we have done every single year I've been on the board. You know, that, it's, it's, this whole thing's coming down to a dedication of us, as a board and as a district, to spend the time looking at this data, talking about this. What does this mean in where we wanna be? I agree with your plan. I don't agree with your, your comment that we're slowing it down. I think we could definitely continue to move forward. But, I mean, I just, you know.
And I, and I agree wholeheartedly. And I think this, these are steps towards where we've talked about we wanna be. So if we, if we develop consensus around these two priorities, senior leadership team goes into its retreat at the end of June, based on that, and then they work on a draft, an update to the five-year plan. They bring that, we do a retreat, talk about the five-year plan, then we plan to adopt it sometime in August. Then we can set a schedule of reporting. So there are, as you know, I'm sure you've all looked at the draft plan, there are very specific benchmarks across a wide array of things that we can then schedule reporting out on, so that we can then begin to adequately monitor all of the progress, so that we can begin to move forward, like you have talked about, like we've all talked about.
Or the rules of monitoring exist. That's, that's my biggest concern. What, what are the rules of monitoring?
And we establish those, and that could be part of the retreat. And then also out of the retreat could come a decision that we do, raise an academic committee that can help to, to do that with the structure that we need, I believe we need, around that, like we have with A and A, and like we have with F A C. And so I think we are marching in that direction. And so, I don't wanna say we're overcomplicating this tonight, 'cause this is a big deal. I get it. But if we can agree, and if it's not tonight, then soon, on these two priorities, then we can get to the plan through a retreat, and then we can get to reporting, and then we can get to that structure. And then I feel like we will have structure all across, and that will allow us to achieve our mission and vision. And I, I think it can be that simple, but we have to just talk about it and develop consensus. And I think Board member Reyes was next, and she hasn't had a And I think Board Member Reyes was next, and she hasn't had a chance to say anything.
And I think where we're getting hung up is the, that, it sounds like some of us feel that things can't change. When you have a lame duck session-
No, that's not what I'm saying, you know?
When, when you have a lame duck session, the work still needs to continue. And I think what the senior team is trying to say is, school starts in less than two, or two months, two and a half months. We need to have some things implemented in order for us to move forward. And some of those things need to change and maybe are outside the scope of possibly these three goals. It took us a while for when, uh, Dr. Good got here for us to establish the three goals. When you have an opportunity, when you need to have direction, you need to move direction. When you get your new leader, that new leader can either adapt to the direction that the, if, let's just say we, uh, before Dr. Good left, we had these two goals. Whoever this new leader is would still have to go through the year with those two goals because the system is already in place to move them forward. They can't say, sorry, academic, uh, leadership team, you spent the last year building this, I'm coming in, I'm changing everything before we're even halfway through the year. Uh, we would hope, and I think we asked that question even for some of the people that we talked to, because they were going, they would, could have possibly been hired midway through the year, is, you know, would you, would you be that leader that comes in, takes, learns, sees what's going on, and then comes in and implements their change? All leaders know that, you come in, you see what's going on. Sometimes you may have to pull and make immediate changes because you may not see that direction, that may not make sense, and you pull the whole year shifting together and say, I'm sorry. I'm here now in September or off, December, based on my experience. We're gonna get together and this direct, this is a direction I'd rather us go through. It could probably be clunky. Or, hey, I'm gonna go through, I'll add some things as we go through the year because I am a new leader, and then when I come in at the end of the year, like anybody does in any company, then you, you, you move that strategy, and it could be that they move back to. Whoever this person is probably would change anything that we have, the three goals, the two goals, whatever those things are. But we do need to have something to move forward to and allow senior leadership to plan for the year.
And I think that's-
Whichever way we're going.
I think it's important also to keep in mind that none of this is baked in. So, the plan, it's a living, breathing document, the strategic plan that will come forward, that we'll review at a retreat, it's, it's not set in stone, it's, it's changeable. And so, when he or she starts, whoever the new superintendent is, he or she will have that opportunity. But as I think Ms. Reyes is indicating, when he or she starts, he or she doesn't have to start everything from scratch because we've already developed this. So that will give him or her time to assess and make changes as he or she goes along. So I think-
I defer to her.
Okay, Ms. Hudson, and then I think Mr. Brown, and then Mr. Cole.
I, I guess, uh, uh, there are a couple of things. One, when you started out, Dr. Stanford, and talking about strategic academic improvement and the surge, you know, there was no discussion there about the five-year plan. Yes, we should review that, and I, and we've kicked the can down the road a number of times. Um, and to this, to the administrative team, I'm sorry. That's, but I was not hearing, I was hearing, this is more like, um, kind of a, you know, a SWAT approach of diving in. I mean, I have issue with, I have a issue with blowing up the three goals so quickly. For the two, and like, for example, the one, um, strategic, the first one on strategic academic achievement. Not that I have any issue with academic achievement, but the word strategic, to me, you know, the goals we have now, say, are comprehensive about all students succeeding. When it's strategic, I mean, I think we need to be careful that we're not suggesting we're teaching to the test, we're only gonna help certain students, we're, you know, we need to make sure it doesn't sound selective. And the second is, is I hear, see all three goals, they're, it's about, it's not about leaving out the financial side. That's aligned, you know, there, you have, we have an asset side and a, and, and, you know, um, an expense side. And they go together, they have to, you know, they both have to work together. And they, both have to be aligned. Um, but I, I really just, I don't know, I don't think that th- these are, I think these are such serious issues. And I don't think they should be done in this fire drill manner. And I really, really have a problem that we're doing this. I think it's, it's created drama that we didn't need and we don't need. Um, if you have recommendations in your planning for changes to the goals, perhaps you, you guys do that and bring it back. But it sounds like, you know, if, if, you guys, you make it, this discussion's made it sound like absolutely nothing is happening in this district. Nothing is happening, nobody's doing anything, and we need to do something all of a sudden immediately. And that is not the case. And so what I wanna understand is, where do we wanna make changes? What are the deltas? And, and, and what's big in that, not, we're not starting with a blank slate. Um, and that's where, and I, I, I'm done. It is too late to continue this.
And we should probably try to set, um, a couple of dates before we go.
Yes.
Just Gibbs, a quick comment. Oh, I'm sorry, Board Member Brown.
You know, following, you know, and I, I didn't know for sure where Michelle was gonna go this last comment, but I think we do need to set some dates now. We're not gonna complete the discussion tonight.
Let's all get our calendars out.
I, I think that, you know, yes, we need to provide feedback. And we need to do that fairly quickly, but we need to set aside some time that we can have a meaningful conversation.
Okay, let's pull our calendars out.
So my point is that, but, but I-
Yes, Ms. Gibbs.
I'd also like to, um, just say about, um, the process. And I want, I wanted to say, one, can we add this to, to the next board meeting? So we could pick it up and you can get more direction, meaning can we get ready to get out of here?
When's the retreat, if they're being-
Their retreat is the 20th and the 23rd.
Twenty first and twenty second.
Yes, and so, can we add it to the next board meeting, so?
We can make it part of the superintendent's report if you want. And we can have a, do this after, try to keep that meeting short. What's your, what's your preference?
Let's put it, let's put it in the regular board meeting, under board matters, or the superintendent's report, it doesn't matter. And then can we send him our questions? And if we need to add some extra dates, fine. If not, the, the ask on the table is very clear, we know what they want.
I think there's still, I think there's still a lot of questions and a lot of feedback that he's taking right now. I, I think we're, we're moving forward too far.
I'm not gonna be here on the next meeting.
I think we're moving way too far.
I'm not, I'm not in town, I, I'm not here.
Okay, Board Member Reyes?
I, I, there's still a lot of concerns, a lot of questions, a lot of fe- feedback. I think the feedback's important that he, that, that's what I'm saying. To, for us to say, now we're gonna tackle it without a lot of the feedback being considered, I think would be, uh, I, I just don't think we should do, we should do that. Because I think there, there's concerns and they, they've been voiced, and I think-
Agreed, now we're trying to find a date.
Yeah, yeah, but you're having a, you're having a date without a lot of responses and a lot of, um, interpretation and, uh, bringing the data in. You know what I'm saying? It's like, it's, it's like, there's concerns that came, come, came up, and you haven't even had an opportunity for Dr. Stanford to talk about that, for the adminis- him and the administration team to talk about. For us to talk about, what does that mean? We're, you set a meeting, so we can discuss and have another discussion about how we don't, some, some of us may agree, might, may not agree. That's, that's, that's premature. I think there's still, there's feedback that needs to, before we set a date, feedback that needs to go there, that needs to be considered so that when we do come back, we have a real reason to come back and discuss.
How, okay, how long do you-
You know what I'm saying? 'Cause otherwise it's gonna be this again.
How long do you think, um, everybody provides you some feedback? How long do you think that you all might need to discuss that before we take this matter up again?
That's, that's, we gotta before this retreat. And my, I have, I mean, Dr. Stanford, to your point about getting some direction on some things, I mean, I, I do see the desire, you know, to constantly evolve and, and look at our goals and what, what makes up those. But I am confident that, especially if there are things that are not appropriations and we can move within our appropriations that we already have, there are plenty of things that I think that we could be working on now that you could give us updates on. This is some of your plans and things like that, you know.
He said, he said it doesn't move the budget pretty good.
Yeah, I mean, so I mean, I, I still think your internal team could still work on, hey, you know, these are some of the areas that we're targeting, part of the broader conversation that we all wanna have. I mean, so I, I, I don't wanna, I don't, you know, I think we, we have the framework to still explore those sort of things, I, I think.
But the superintendent wants, um, direction on this. Narrowing it down to two priorities that we align on.
I'm not prepared to vote on that right now.
No.
No, no, I'm just talking about let's set a date to just have another discussion.
Yes, can we set the date to have the next discussion? I offer it the June 20 board meeting, the June 19 board meeting.
Ms. Hudson is away, so she wouldn't be able to join us for that.
So we pick an alternate date maybe by itself?
Then I'll be going into July.
When are you leaving again?
June 20.
June 20 is, well-
I'm out on 20th of August.
September 4th. That's, we have, we are doing the search, and we have, we're packed to do stuff right now. I, I guess I, like, I would say we, I know it sounds like not walking and chewing gum at the same time, but-
Yeah, is there any, are there any dates prior to June 19th that we have? I, uh, Mr. Vice President?
I, I, I'm willing to make myself available. I'm willing to make myself available on the 19th.
That, that won't work, Ms. Hudson's out of town.
Is it possible to send you up for back in your-
I don't know, why are you even gonna ask? There's, it's not, there isn't really, it's, or we wanna redo the goals. Well, we like, but why? And what, like, for what purpose? And, you know, what's the end state? What's the end state that we're trying to achieve that we're not at now?
The senior leadership ti- team, the people that, that are the academic leaders of the district are presenting to us through Dr. Stanford their thoughts about how we could realign everything around those two priority areas.
But I, I, it's, what's broken and what needs to be fixed?
Yes, Mr. Brown.
We need a date.
One, I've said, you know, over time continually, that we ought to take a look at Saturdays and Sundays. Am I just wasting my breath? Is everybody against doing that?
Yes, Sunday is my holy day, Sunday is my high holy day.
Saturday!
We've worked Saturdays before.
We can do a Saturday.
Okay, secondly, this is something obviously based on tonight, where our mediator can help us. Why don't we make sure that as we go forward, we're using our mediator?
'Cause he's very specific. Can we get back to the date search, can we, so we can adjourn?
Yeah, let's see if we can find a date.
If we can't find a date, we-
I don't even know, it didn't ask, honestly.
Well, we've answered that, Mary, that we've answered it twice.
No, we have not, there has not been an answer.
You don't like the answer, but he's answered it.
No, there hasn't been an answer.
He's answered it, so-
No, it has not.
Can we just find a date or put it on the 19th? He's answered it.
They want guidance on the two priorities.
But the priorities, that's us talking through the priorities.
And so we need a date to do that.
All right.
Okay, so let's try to pick a date between now and June 19th, if at all impossible.
The 13th.
I'm available.
The only day, only time I'm available is the 14th, after finance.
I'm not the 14th.
That is the only, and-
What is the 14th?
The 14th is Thursday. I don't, I can't do the 14th. I can do the 13th.
Does Hudson have any other date?
What's the 18th?
I do not have, the 12th is the, I know I can't, the 13th, I'm not available.
The 18th is a date we have reserved for the search, if y'all will get-
Eighteenth, I am not in town.
We have to have a search.
I know, I'm not here.
Oh, you're out.
She's out.
Yeah, no, I have a, I have meetings all the time.
What about the 16th?
Uh, it's pride.
What about 9th?
Do you know?
Mr. Treasurer?
Is the 11th already jammed?
Yeah, we already, we're already meeting.
We have a search meeting.
But, I mean, that's gonna be totally full.
That's why, like, why do we do, why are we doing this in like a fire drill? We worked, we worked forever on those goals, and then you're just gonna like blow them up in this fire drill? I don't get it.
So, can I-
They are not that inadequate.
I move, President Becker, I move that we resume this discussion on the 19th of whether to have the discussion there or to have the date on the 19th at our next release board meeting.
With any appropriate feedback submitted to the superintendent.
I mean, I, I, I'm just still kinda, I mean, confused. I feel like everything that we wanna do as a district, you can do it within the three goals. The whole problem is, is just how we're monitoring.
We postpone this discussion until the 19th.
The desire changing.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion before us. The motion is that we postpone this discussion until meeting on the 19th. Any discussion on that? Mr. Treasurer?
Uh, Mr. Brown.
Fine.
Vice President Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Gibbs?
Yes.
Hudson is absent. Mr. Peretti?
Absolutely. Yes.
Mr. Reyes?
Yes.
And President Baker?
Yes.
That motion carry.
Thank you. We will return to this discussion on the 19th. And if there's nothing else for the good of the order, we have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moving seconded. Yes, good night. Coleman, Reyes, call the roll, please.
Vice President Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Peretti?
Yes.
Ms. Reyes?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes.
And I think Mr. Brown, Ben Ron was way out the door.
He did, he said yes.
That motion carry.
Thank you, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.